I call the Board of Alderman meeting for the City of Warrenton to order on August 7, 2012, 7:00 PM. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance led by Alderman Clark.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the Board of Alderman meeting minutes of July 17, 2012. Any concerns, additions, or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the rest of our Board of Alderman meeting minutes of July 17, 2012.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the Board of Alderman minutes for the date of July 17, 2012. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
I abstain, I wasn't present.
Motion carried, three yes, two absents, one extension. Executive session minutes from July 3, 2012.
I'll make a motion to approve the executive minutes.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the executive session minutes from July 3, 2012. Roll call vote.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero. Item 3C, special emergency meeting minutes from July 10, 2012.
Make a motion to approve the meeting, no, minutes from the special emergency meeting held on July 10, 2012.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve the special emergency meeting minutes from July 10, 2012. Roll call.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero. At this time, item four is hearing from the public. If someone wants to address the board, we ask that you come forward to the podium and state your name. Keep your remarks civil, please, and you'll be limited to five minutes. So, at this time, is there anyone that would like to address the board? Hearing from no one, we will extend that same courtesy to the Board of Aldermen. Any of the Aldermen have comments that you'd like to make to the public?
I had two actual areas that I would like to address. First one being that it was nice to come down Main Street, see a nice, fresh look to the asphalt. I was glad with the end product and kind of surprised at how quickly they got that done. Hopefully that did not cause too much of a disturbance to the Main Street businesses. The second one, I had the opportunity to sign my children up for soccer and was a pleasant experience with one of the city employees that I had not dealt with before, Deanna, in the Recreation Department. She should be commended. I hope that everybody employed by the city presents that while Ms. Banger did not know me, did not know that I was an Alderman, went at great lengths to explain the signup process and also discussed some of the areas they tried to improve this year with addressing special requests and needs of the parents as it pertained to coaching, being on a specific team, or carpooling requests, that they had made a spreadsheet to try and meet everybody's requests, and she believed that they were going to be able to meet all of those requests. So, it was good to have a positive contact with an employee of the city.
Anyone else have any comments? Next item on there is the mayor's report. My report tonight's pretty brief. Just a reminder to the Board of Aldermen that we do have a work session on Tuesday, August 14, at 6:00 PM regarding special events with the Recreation Department. Other item I might give you a brief report on is the water situation within the Warrenton, our City of Warrenton. Our wells all seem to be functioning back to normal. We are going to keep the voluntary water mandate in effect until the drought lifts, and nobody knows when that's going to be. So, until that time, we'll keep the slides on the swimming pool closed so we don't waste any extra water and ask that the irrigation systems only be ran in the wee hours of the morning. The other item I want to report to you, this Thursday, the Fine Arts Council and the George Ports and Friends of Bluegrass have a concert in the park located at Dyer Park here in Warrenton. It'll be Thursday, Thursday, August 9, from 7 to 9. So, anybody would like to attend? I think I've not attended one concert this summer, so I got that on my list. I'm going to try to make that one, so, and that's all I have. My next item of business is the, item seven, request to close the falling roads on September 22nd for a 5K run for Slim's Journey. Someone want to address that item?
Good evening.
Good evening.
By way of introduction, my name's Jeff Myers. Grew up here in this little, small town. Life's journey's kind of carried me away, but we keep finding our way back here quite a bit. Slim's Journey's 5K is a fundraiser for a neuromuscular disorder called Friedreich's atoxia. FARA, the Friedreich's atoxia Research Alliance, is the overriding charity. How this all came to be, my son last year was 16 years old, had some scoliosis problems. We ended up going to an orthopedic. He referred us to a neurologist. Neurologist tells us, hey, this is what you kind of have to deal with. You can look it up on the internet. Gives us the name of it and says, you know, that's just how you get through the next 10 to 20 years. Gave us a supplement to take, said this helps counteract some of the balance problems. That's a balance disorder. So, we left out of there thinking, I'm a glass half-full kind of guy, it's no big deal. 10, 20 years, we can get through this. What I didn't realize was that 10 to 20 years was the life expectancy. And the other part was that right now there's no cure. There's a few things in the pipeline that are being tested now, some drugs, but they're in the testing phases and that all requires money. Not being a doctor, scientist, or pharmaceutical company, I can't go out and solve this problem myself, but what I can do is raise money. And that was the idea that my sister-in-law had, and she came up with the idea of a 5K run, and that's what brings me here in front of you today. Slim's Journey 5K, we're looking to start there. Staging area would be the Methodist Church there on Route M. We were going to head east on Route M to, I believe it's West Street, just inside of Truesdale. From there, we'll go south and then further east on South Street there by Truesdale City Hall down Pinkney, make the right onto Roy, then we'll come in through Vosch, we'll wind through the residential area until it comes back up through Pershing there by Daniel Boone Elementary, and then northbound on Cool to finish up. That's the 3.1 miles needed for the route. What we're asking is for permission to be able to close Route M from the start of the race until probably approximately 15 minutes or so, and then all the runners would be on the secondary street. Talked to the chief about it a couple weeks ago and he had a really good idea of like a rolling roadblock, so we're ready to go set it up and take off from there. The assets we'd be asking for from the city, probably just at least one, maybe two officers for a short period of time. I work for the Highway Patrol and I've gotten commitments from my agency already of providing at least two officers to help with traffic. And what we've asked for from Truesdale is, one, to shut down the, or to close the southbound portion of Pinkney from South Street down to Roy. But that is our request that sits in front of you today.
So, the rest of the subdivisions, it's not an issue? Once you get on Roy Avenue, you don't see any problems?
I don't foresee it to be a problem. We're expecting 150 to 250 people, this is our first time through. We do have some folks coming in from out of state for this, but yeah, I don't think the crowd, I would say it's probably going to be 30% runners and 70% walkers, and the walkers can hang off to the side. We're recruiting some volunteers to kind of handle the intersections in the residential part of the neighborhood. We were going to do a water station down by the, I think it's a ball field or soccer down there off of Lakeview. I think that's the street there by the Creek Crossing. We're just going to set up a table, put up a cooler with some water and hand out cups. Obviously, police up the trash once everybody's gone through. The other request that my wife did have, she wanted me to ask because I was nominated for this job, was to inquire about if it'd be possible to paint directional markers on the road, on pavement. That was the other thing, you know, a right arrow at a right intersection, things of that nature.
What would you paint that with?
Probably just ground marking paint on a stencil. We haven't necessarily decided.
Mayor, if I could?
Sure, Ken.
Jeff and I have worked together actually really closely and Julie as well over the last couple of months on this thing. They put a lot of work into finding a really good route that kind of keeps them off of the main drag, and I think what we should expect to see probably in this first year is, you know, the whole group leaving as a whole, which is why I suggested a rolling, sort of a rolling roadblock, that's going to thin out pretty quickly and, you know, end up two to three by just going down the street. So, from a traffic situation, it's not going to be a huge ordeal through town. The other thing is this marking of the street. I believe the board has given permission to Teresa Scott over the last couple of years to mark a couple of routes, and Brad had made up a stencil with a little running man figure on it that she went through and marked the streets with a directional arrow so everybody could figure it out, and it's really not obtrusive at all.
My only concern by even asking that question was, you know, is it a temporary marking that's going to wash off or wear off?
They do tend to wear off over time, but as far as getting through the race, it will be perfect.
Okay. Wouldn't be causing any traffic problems later on or anything like that?
In fact, they're out in the streets right now still from, they catch the glow rays, and, you know, people generally drive on.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
I have had the pleasure of, I've known Slim since he was born, so you don't have to convince me of the quality of the idea. I would make a motion to, do we need, I guess we need a motion to approve the request to close Route M from College United Methodist Church to West Street and the northbound lane of Cool Avenue from Voschel to Route M on Saturday, September 22nd, from the, from 8:00 AM to 9:30 AM.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Clark to request to close the falling roads on September 22nd. Route M from College United Methodist Church to West Street and northbound lane of Cool Avenue from Voschel to Route M. Of course, West Street's not in our jurisdiction. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to nothing, considered done.
Thank you, folks.
Good luck.
Item eight, Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, Finance Officer. It's up to you.
The first item I have for you this evening is a request for approval of our accounts payable. There actually are two lists tonight. One of those is the invoices for June that are being accrued since June was the end of our fiscal year. Those invoices will be accrued back for the June period. That total is $55,359.81. The other is the July bills for a total of $286,450.53.
Do these need to be motioned separately?
No, I'm saying.
I make a motion to approve accounts payable.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve the accounts payable, and we are doing both of those?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero.
My next item for you tonight is a request for funds from the Tourism Committee. They met on July 24th. They had two requests for funding, both of them in the category for the interstate logo signs, one from Relax Inn for $400 and one from the China House Buffet for $400, for a total of $800.
Any comments or concerns from the Tourism Commission?
I do have a question. How often do these come due? Is it just a one-year contract?
It's once a year that they have to pay for them.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the Tourism Commission to authorize them to spend $800.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the Tourism recommendations at the expenditure rate of $800. Roll call vote.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero with two absences. Forgot to mention, we have two Alderman absents tonight.
And?
Next item is employee uniform bid.
Yes, sir. As we do at this time every year, Brandy has completed the bids for employee uniforms. There were new bidders, at least a new bidder this year that we had not seen in the past, and G and K, who actually was the company that was providing our pants last year, did not bid. So, it was somewhat different than what we had seen. The recommendation for T-shirts, we did get a bid for printed T-shirts from a couple of the bidders, although we didn't request those, but the recommendation is to go with the embroidered T-shirts. We, years ago, had the T-shirts with the screen printing, and what we found is that after they're washed a few times, it starts to peel off, so they don't look very good after a few washings. So, we are recommending, as we have done over the past few years, the embroidered T-shirts, and the low bidder is Aramark for those T-shirts. Our cost last year was $9.25 and $10.95 for the larger sizes, so this is a reduction for Aramark to $9.50 for all the different sizes. For the knit sport polos, we were with Eagle Activewear last year. They actually provided the very same bid as they did in the prior year. They did not have a price increase for those, and the recommendation is to go, again this year, with Eagle Activewear. For the knit sport polo shirts, we did not bid last year, summer hats and winter hats. We actually had a stock of those left over, but now they're gone. So, she did bid the summer hats and Eagle Activewear was the low bidder. Winter hats, Eagle Activewear was also the low bidder on those. And then on your next page, the men's industrial work pants, we were with G and K last year, and their prices were $1,235 and $1,432 for the larger sizes. The Clean Store, which was a new bidder this year, actually came in at a little bit reduced rates for the smaller sizes than what we had seen in the past, so that's our recommendation for the industrial work pants for both men and women. And then for the men's and women's cargo pants, G and K was also the provider for those last year. The price was $19.60, and the bid from Aramark this year came in at $15, so we're recommending to go with them for the men's and women's cargo pants. So, the recommendation is the low bidder in each of the different categories.
Do you have a total amount on all those?
I have a total for each particular type, but not overall, if you'd like that. For the embroidered T-shirts, the total bid from Aramark would be $1,947.50. For the knit sport polos from Eagle Activewear would be $660. For the summer hats from Eagle Activewear, $260. For the winter hats from Eagle Activewear, $142.50. For the men's and women's industrial work pants from the Clean Store, $1,178.15. And for the men's and women's cargo pants from Aramark, $210.
All these were low bids?
All of those are the low bidders, yes, sir.
These are, these are uniforms that are issued to the employees. Are they collected when employees leave their employment with the city?
We have not collected those when employees have left. What we did start doing actually just last year, what we found is that even though employees were getting new uniforms, they were still wearing, for example, the pants from the prior year, which didn't look very good. So, we did start collecting the old uniforms when new uniforms are issued, so that we're making sure the new ones are put into the cycle. But we have not collected them in the past from employees who have left.
Do the employees pay anything toward their uniforms?
No, they do not.
That we furnish, the city furnishes them all?
Yes, sir.
I think it's a good program. It's a good presentation to the public when they're, when they, at least they know who the workers are and who the employees are, and I think it's a good concept. Any questions or concerns? Entertained a motion to accept the low bids on the uniform. Second. Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Clark to accept the employee uniform bids as presented, all being the low bid. Roll call vote.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero with two absences.
Next I have for you is the annual fuel bid. We break this up into two different components, one being the gasoline and the other being diesel fuel delivered to multiple locations throughout the city. We only, for the diesel fuel, the delivery to the locations, the recommendation is to go with Warrenton Oil, which is 10 cents above the Opus St. Louis average. I asked Gabrielle today to take a look at what the comparison is for this Opus number versus pump price, and she did take a look at that and actually talked to someone related to Opus, and this is a better deal for us. While there's no way for us to really confirm gallon to gallon, she was able to confirm that this 10 cents over the Opus price is a less cost to the city per gallon than what the pump price is. And this is delivered fuel. This isn't something we go and buy at the pump. There's big tanks at different locations that they actually come and fill. So, the recommendation for diesel fuel is, again, with Warrenton Oil. That's how we've used actually for a number of years. As far as the gasoline, the recommendation is to go with Thaley. They're the only bidder for the gasoline that gave us anything off of the pump price that has the ability to provide 24-hour access. We did get a bid from this Energy Petroleum, but they're interested in doing the fill of a large tank. They don't have a station in the area anywhere we can access, and we did get information from Casey's General Store. However, it wasn't a sealed bid and they don't have 24-hour service, although they did indicate that they're working toward that. So, perhaps in the future, there'll be another bidder. But right now, Warrenton Oil is the recommendation for diesel and Thaley for gasoline, and those are two, the same two bidders we've used in both areas for a number of years.
Any questions for Terry? Entertained a motion to accept the two low bids.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the two low bids, Warrenton Oil for the diesel fuel and, how you pronounce the other place?
Thole.
Thole for the gasoline.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Cornell to accept the diesel fuel bid as presented from Warrenton Oil Company, and the gasoline bid presented by Thole. Roll call vote.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero with two absences.
Next I have for you is information related to the municipal pool season passes. We had talked a couple meetings ago about the potential for different options for refund of a portion or maybe the full amount of the season pass. So, what I did was, and I believe you had this information in your packets, looked at the number of days that the pool, a typical season is, which is 101 days this year, looked at the number of days that the pool was closed, which is really 14.9% of the season, then looked at the number of the different types of season passes that have been issued. I was really surprised, honestly, by this number, and the thing that struck me the most is when I took the resident family, two to four-person household number and divided it into a per-day cost, it costs 99 cents a day for a family of four to use the pool if they obtain a family pass. I think that's a really good value for entertainment, and I think we need to be advertising that because we never had really quantified it that way. That's not the purpose today, but tried to come up with different ways, looked at what the total refund would be if we refunded the full season pass cost, which is in the season revenue column, $9,515 is what the total amount would be if we refunded the full pass. If you look at, based upon the percentage of days that the pool was closed, it would give, for example, again, that $100 family of four pass, it would give them a $14.85 credit or refund, if you will, and then looked at the rest of the season being if we refunded everything from the day the pool closed through the end of the season, what would that dollar amount be? And again, for that $100 pass, that would equate to $60.40. The thing that I was not able to quantify, however, is the value of the slide, which has been closed since the day we closed the pool, and the spread ground, and I just don't know how to put that into a number. I don't know how to quantify that. So, I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. I'm just not sure how you turn that into dollars and cents. Three different options, three different numbers that you can take a look at. The fact of the matter is, season passes are not where the pool generates its greatest dollar value. That's really in day passes. For example, compared to this $9,500 projected revenue for day passes is about $45,000. So, this is a significant amount, but certainly not the most significant amount related to passes for the pool. So, tried to provide as much information as possible, not sure what direction you all want to go, but here are the numbers for your consideration.
I know we struggled with that the first time we, the subject team came up and then we talked about it, and I think there's a variety of positions on it, so now is your chance to speak your piece on this.
Is it the thought process, no matter which route we go with the refund, is it the thought process to seek those people out and provide them with the refund or only providing it upon request?
Well, it's my opinion, in order to be fair, that no matter- Well, it's my opinion, in order to be fair, that no matter what we do, we refund it to everyone in that category, and we certainly have those records. As far as from a financial perspective, the one thing I do not want to see us do is to issue a credit. I prefer to do a check, send everybody a refund, because I think you create an accounting nightmare at the beginning of next season trying to keep up with who has what credit. So, whatever we do, I'd like to see us do it as a refund to all of those parties that are involved.
I, I would agree with that. I guess that when, when we talk about struggling on how to quantify the value of the spray park or the water slide, I think that it's impossible for us to quantify it. The one that's going to quantify it is the, the pass holder. It's my, I think without a doubt, every season pass holder needs to be offered the per-day cost for the days that were closed. I would also like to see if somebody, for whatever reason, the fact that we were closed for those days, if it is their belief that the, they had lost the value of the season pass and they wanted to turn their season pass in and get refunded for the remainder of the season, I, I think it kind of comes down to a, the customer's always right policy, and, which I believe is, is a good policy to have, and I believe that, that would be the fair thing to do. If somebody, if somebody feels that that is what makes it right by them, I think they're the one that best quantifies the value.
Are you, are you offering two, two situations in of refund for season, season pass holders or turn your season pass in?
Well, I, I think that we owe the, the season pass holders, I think we owe them the refund for the day, the days that we were closed. If, if somebody doesn't feel that that fairly compensates them, their ability to turn in their pass and say, you know what, it was no longer valued. They, they still had paid for the days that they had the ability to use it prior to the closing of the pool, but allow them to be refunded for the remainder of the season.
Pro rata cases?
And, and I don't know that anybody will, I don't know if anybody will find that to be the situation. I don't know if we'll have any requests for it, but I do think it's the right thing to make that available to them.
What, what kind of accounting issue would that be if we, if we went that direction?
Off the top of my head, the only thing I can think of is I think you would need to establish a date. So, from the time you make your decision, are you going to leave that open until the end of the season? Because then I'm turning my pass in and getting my money. So, I think you would have to establish from today, how many days do you have to do that if that's what you choose to do? And then if we haven't been contacted within a certain period of time, I think we would need to go ahead and process the refund checks. I think you, I guess what I'm saying is there needs to be an end date, because otherwise we could be working on this in November trying to figure out which refund we need to process.
I, I agree with that.
Other than that, you know, whether we process a check for $14 or $60 is the same process we need to go through. As long as we have that deadline date, so anyone that we haven't heard from, we can go ahead and get those refunds taken care of. Other than that, I don't-
Is there any way to tell how many times they've come to the pool after it's been opened back up?
Yes. Every day that a season pass is used, they're required to sign in with their pass number. And we actually have a daily log sheet that would tell us that if we needed to know.
Well, I was saying, because, you know, if you do the 1485, you pay them for it when it's closed, but they've come five, six days after that. And then if, if they want their, the rest of the season pass money back, you're going to give them the $60.40 or are you going to take off the five or six days extra that you've used it since then?
I would hate to see us get into a, count the number of days and, because now you are talking about an accounting nightmare to try to do that on a per-person basis.
Well, and again, I think the importance here is, even though we are opened back up, the product that we are offering, the customer, is different than the product they purchased the pass for. Not saying it's a fault of the cities, but, but the fact that the water slide isn't included, the wa, the fact that the spray park isn't included, may make a difference on whether somebody feels that they have a value there. I, and I, I just think it comes down to, we have an opportunity to send the message to the customer that, that they're the ones that, that can quantify that. I don't think that anybody's trying to, trying to get over on us and, and use the pool and not have to pay for it. I, I think that it is important when, when we as a provider were unable to provide the service, that we fairly, allow the customer to be fairly compensated. And the one that can tell whether or not they're fairly compensated is the customer.
Well, I think then you need to just give everybody all their money back and just, if they want to use the pool, they just come pay every time they show up for the rest of the season.
If the, sure, if they want to turn their season pass in, that's what they would have to do.
That would be the one, you know, since, since the slide's not working and other stuff, you know, that would be a big hassle for everybody if you have to come there and pay every day. But you're getting a better deal when you've got the season pass.
I agree. If you turn in your season pass, you're either not coming back to the pool or you're going to have to pay on a daily basis. I, I would agree with that.
Alderman Clark, I need some input from you.
Wish he wouldn't have done that. I, I understand what Alderman Cornell is saying. I don't necessarily disagree with him, but I'm, I know a, as a season pass holder, you, you know, you're, you're subject to days when there's rain and stuff where the pool is closed that we've never compensated back for. I, I think the days that, that we were just closed and compensate them for that would be sufficient. Whether the, it's a, a slide is kind of a, as I look at it, is if you go through the history of a pool, the slide and the spray areas are added features that we've added to it. I don't know if it's the only reason people go to them. Mostly they're just going to get out of the, out of the heat and try to cool down some. Do, have something to do. You start trying to qualify it for those other items, I don't know. So, you're, you're still taking a somewhat of a risk when you, when you buy the season pass, whether you can use the pool or not.
So, if I'm hearing you right, you're saying just compensate them for the days it was closed?
I say if they want to be compen, yeah, just compensate them for the days they're closed, and, and I think it would be sufficient. And either way, it's not really going to tremendously kill the city, because it's already, we're already going to hold how much, how many dollars a year?
Many more than that.
Many, many, many more. I mean, you're talking about, about 20 or 38, $3,500 difference, something like that?
Correct.
On it. So, in the big scheme of things, not for the pool, that's just another $3,500 in the hole.
Alderman Flake?
I kind of agree with what John's saying. I just believe that paying for the days the pool was closed-
Which John?
Clarify.
Which John?
Said you agree with what John's saying.
I mean, that's going down the middle of the road.
I said for the days that the pool was closed. That's, that's my take on it.
And Alderman Dreyer?
That's, that's what I was thinking, is paying back from the days it was closed.
Anything else you want to add?
Think we're missing a good opportunity to-
Good opportunity?
To, to, to do the right thing, but that's just my two cents.
I understand. Someone want to make a motion on how we handle it?
I make a motion that we reimburse for the days that we were closed at the amounts that the, Terry has provided for us.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to reimburse the season pass holders. What was the amount, Terry?
Well, it depends on which pass, but it's 14.9% of the amount that you paid for your season pass.
For the season pass, okay. At that 14.9% rate. Have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried three to one with two absences.
Next I believe in your packet, you had a list of items requested to be approved for sale. If you'll recall, we now put all of the items that the city sells on the Gov. Deals website and leave it open for a period of time. It's amazing to me what a difference that has made in the amounts that we are receiving for some of these items that we dispose of. There are one, two, five vehicles on here, and I believe next meeting we'll have a couple of mowers on, on another list to be added. But requesting approval to dispose of these items no longer needed by the city.
Your, your experience has been that you're getting better prices for, off of Gov. Deals?
Much better. We used to run ads in the paper and that kind of thing, and, you know, the bidders who, the most amazing thing to me, the last few larger items we bid, the people who have won the bid have been from like out of Kansas City. And they're coming all the way here to pick up those items.
Do we pay a commission on the sale of those?
We do. It's a minimum of $5, and then it is, I believe, 7% of whatever the high bid price is. So, it actually ends up most times costing us less than what it used to cost us to run the ad in the paper.
And these, are, do we post pictures on, on the web of the vehicles?
We do. A description, pictures of the vehicles and contact information, so that if they want to contact Brandy and, you know, make arrangements to come out and look at, at some of the items they do. Surprisingly, the higher priced items that we've sold, nobody's come to look at them, but that bid goes like crazy on there when it gets close to the end. So, I've been really surprised, but it's a good, a good opportunity for municipalities to get rid of surplus goods.
Anyone have any questions concerning the bid items?
No. I, I know I've had a few phone calls of why there's so many police cars out back. This would eliminate part of the problem.
Are we, are we removing the decals prior to?
Yes.
All right. Light bars stay on, or?
They do.
They do.
I make a motion to approve the sale of the items listed.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve the sale of the five items listed for sale. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried four, zero with two absences.
And then a note for you on the rain barrels that we talked about donated by Coca-Cola last meeting. We actually received, I believe, 30-something of those. They're in our possession. We actually have already had people come and start picking those up. All that an individual needs to do is to come to City Hall, get the key that's used currently for the yard waste dump. We're limiting it right now to two barrels per person until we make sure that everybody in the city who wants one gets one. We have had a request for a significant number of those, and we're keeping that information. But first want to make sure that everybody individually who wants one gets one. Can go out to the yard waste area, pick up the barrels, bring the key back. That's all there is to it. So, no need to call ahead. They're there. I don't know how many we have left out there, but I do know we've had some people come and pick them up.
Sounds like a good deal. Free.
Free, free.
Do these have lids and everything?
No, they're a solid barrel, as I understand it, correct, Guy? With the ability to put a spigot into it, to use it for, you know, watering plants or flowers or, I guess, whatever purpose you would choose to do. But they are white, heavy polymer drums.
Like the county used out by the, with their trees?
No, I think they're taller than that.
Well, those are cut in half.
Those are 50 tons. They look like about 40-gallon tank.
40?
You say you've had requests for people that want more than the two?
Mm-hmm.
Be interesting to see if we start seeing them on Craigslist.
The request was actually for 30, and we only got 30-something, so we said we'll take, you know, we'll take your name. If Coca-Cola happens to say we've got 100 barrels, then certainly we would have them, but right now we want to make sure that all the residents who want these for watering purposes get one, so. All right. As far as operational updates, the only thing I have for you tonight in that area is just to let you know that Gabrielle and Greg have worked really hard to get more payment options put onto the website. So, now the ability to pay for things like occupational licenses and building permits that we previously did not have the ability to put those payments on electronically are there. So, thank you to Gab and Greg for the hard work getting that done. So, we are very close to having the ability now to accept payments for almost everything through the website, which is great as far as convenience goes for our customers.
Interesting.
Also in your packet, you had a safety awareness program. This is the same safety awareness program that has been in place for a number of years in the city. We took it to the safety committee, had them review it for any recommended updates, took it back to the department heads to look at. There were very few changes, other than just to make sure that the individuals responsible for certain areas were the right individuals and would like to get an approval on this amended version, so that it is updated. It requires it to be reviewed and updated annually, so this would be the update for 2012. This group meets quarterly and reviews all of the accidents or incidents that have happened over the last quarter. And next meeting, you should have your first minutes from the meeting that just happened last week of that safety committee. So, it will be included in your packet each quarter when that meeting actually happens.
Any questions, concerns considering the safety awards program? I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the safety awards program update for 2012. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences.
And then I promise lastly for you, for me this evening, is a request for policy approval. Brandy has been going through our policies to make sure, every once in a while, about every couple of years, we try to go through and make sure that our employee handbook is updated. And this year, we went through and looked to make sure that the board approval dates that were on policies, we were able to verify those with board minutes. And the list that you have here are policies that have been around for quite some time. But we can't find a specific date to tie back to when these policies were actually approved by the board. So, our decision was to go through, make sure that they're all still accurate, and then get them approved by the board, so that we can have a date to tie back formally to when the policies were approved. The only changes are the Cobra policy- The only changes are the COBRA policy. We went through to make sure that the periods of time were accurate. We found a couple of those that were inaccurate according to what the requirements are for notifications and those types of things. Also added to the new employee orientation and orientation for seasonal employees because there was nothing addressed, and we actually do a very abbreviated version of an orientation for seasonal employees, which really encompasses just those things to make sure, you know, they know when they're going to get paid and those types of things. So I don't know, Chris, can they approve these? Do they need to do them individually?
Well, I mean, I guess the question would be is whether or not you guys have discussion on any of the individual policies because we are asking you to reapprove or approve these policies. If you don't, I think in the motion, you could just list the policies you're moving to approve and just take it as one vote.
The date you're going to use then is today's date?
Yes, sir.
If they're approved?
Yes.
That will make it effective August seventh. How much time off do they get to vote?
I think we have actually had, I don't remember in the recent past, but I remember a few years ago we had employees maybe be gone for thirty minutes. I only remember a couple of times actually that I'm aware that that happened, but...
Is there a statutory amount of time that you have to allow?
I have no idea. This policy's been around, it appears, for maybe fifteen or eighteen years, as best we could figure out.
This is the first time I've ever seen a policy, a written policy, given employees the right to have time off to vote.
It looks to me like it's very, it's been around a very long time.
And that's why, I haven't seen it written, that's why I was curious of whether or not it was statutory.
Any questions or concerns on any one of those items? If no one has a question, then I think we can lump them all into one, one motion.
Okay. And just informationally, our intention is starting forward that as Melody puts the minutes together and we have the formal version of the minutes, we are actually going to include copies so that when someone in the future goes back and tries to figure out what was there, there will actually be a copy of the policy you approved in that set of minutes rather than trying to dig back through and figure out when things were approved. Melody suggested that, and I think that will make things much, much easier in the future moving forward, so that would be the plan.
I make a motion that we approve the policies. There's nine of them. Do I need a list of each nine? Code coverage, employees' education, equal employment, hepatitis B shots, insurance, new employees' orientation, payroll, and time off to vote.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the policy approval for code recovery, employee education, equal employment, hepatitis B shots, insurance, new employee orientation, payroll, time off to vote. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero, two absences. Is that it?
That's it.
We're going to turn it over to item nine, Jack Hamp, planning and zoning director.
What you have before you is a proposed amendment to section 405.400 fees to include in-house plan review fees. This proposed amendment would allow in-house plan review with the right to have any submitted plans reviewed by an engineering architectural firm. This item was tabled at the last meeting. I was not present at that meeting, and I was checking to see if you have any specific questions.
I think we had quite a discussion on that the last meeting, and part of, part of the discussion was the fact that the fees have all been lowered because we're doing them in-house, and I think Alderman Cornell questioned maybe they should be free. That's kind of where we left it, and so we're, we've got it back on the table again.
I guess first off, I want to commend the staff to, who took the initiative to find a way to cut the cost to, to the customer again. I did have some concerns about the justification for, for the charging of the fees. Jack, as I, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, as it's been explained to me currently, for a site plan approval, a customer requesting that would make a deposit, and then it would be sent to George Butler and Associates, is that correct?
There'd be a hundred and twenty-five dollar application fee, there'd be a three hundred dollar publication deposit, and a five hundred dollar engineering deposit. And then the plan would be sent out, and then depending on the time spent by Butler would be the rate that the customer would pay.
And we're, we're not proposing to change the publication fees or the application fees. It is the, the five hundred dollars that goes to George Butler, correct?
No, we would, we would keep that, we would keep the right to send plans out if necessary. The only thing we were requesting to change is to have the ability to review the plans in-house at specific rates to save the customer money compared to the rate that George Butler would theoretically charge for the same review.
And that's what I'm saying, the, the change would not be in the publication cost or the application. It would be in you doing it in-house as opposed to George Butler and Associates doing it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that is a source of the savings to the customer.
Yes.
Okay. What is the, what do you envision your capacity to handle this workload?
I would plan on trying to review every plan we receive.
And, and I guess, I'm not articulating well, and I apologize for that. Currently, currently you could handle the workload of the amount of, of those tasks.
That we've received to date, yes, sir.
Okay. How far out in the future do you believe you can, is this something that you believe that, boy, next year, we may have enough business that the current rate, how close to your capacity is the current rate?
If I'm understanding your question correctly...
Neither do I.
How many plans do I feel I can review?
Correct, if, if...
No one can anticipate what's going to be turned in, but I do not see a, I do not anticipate a problem being able to review them and turn them around in, you know, the required time.
And hope that is a problem.
Yeah, I do too.
Let's hope that is a problem. I agree, I agree. And that's what, I guess if we're, I don't want to, my, my question is, are we instituting a change that we can foresee in a year while we can't keep up with the demand and we're going to have to start sending everything back out?
I would not anticipate that.
Okay. And currently, if they pay five hundred dollars for the deposit to go to George Butler, if George Butler's costs aren't to that, do the customers sometimes receive a refund?
Yes.
Okay.
There's times they get a refund, and there's times they pay an additional charge.
So, so currently, the, the city doesn't receive any revenue from that review process. All, all of the money goes to George Butler. What George Butler deems to be over and above that is returned to the customer, not to the city, correct?
Correct.
Again, I, I guess my, my concern is, we have, we have been fortunate enough to have an employee who has the qualifications and the abilities to perform these tasks. And while I commend the staff for going forward and finding a way to cut the costs, the fact that Jack was a pre-existing employee, paid for with tax dollars, I, I don't... If we didn't take this duty on, on ourselves, if we continued to send those to George Butler, we would still have Jack employed here. So I just don't, I don't like the thought of charging a fee as a revenue stream. If that fee was to offset a cost other than Jack's salary, I, I think that's fair game. But the fact that, it seems like we are recouping a cost that we were already expending. We're trying to cover Mr. Hamp's cost, and I, I think fees should be just that. Fees should be to cover the cost of the work performed, not as a revenue stream.
And the plan review fee, there's going to be a charge whether it's in-house or sent out. So the customer's going to play a, pay a review fee, no matter what, on any plan that's turned in. Our goal was to make that review fee that the customer would be paying less to help encourage business and growth.
And I understand, and I understand that. I guess my question is, you say that they're going to pay a review fee whether it's kept in-house or sent out. Why are they paying if it's kept in-house? That, that's my question.
Well, I researched several other nearby cities, and everybody has somewhat of a different policy. Some charge a percentage of the total cost of the project, some charge fees to go and do inspections. So it seems like it's...
The norm.
Normal to, to generate some revenue during this process to, to help cover time spent out in the field looking at the projects, time spent, you know, physically looking at each plan.
And, and I understand that other cities do it. I'm not a guy that just because we've always done it, we should do it that way, or just because somebody else does it, we should do it that way. And I guess if, if it increased the time, but my understanding from, from conversations is, this isn't going, while you are going to be doing this work, you're not going to start working sixty hours a week. We're not going to have overtime incurred. It's going to be work that is, is done within your normally scheduled workday. I just don't, I don't want to be critical of a plan that saves the customer money. I just feel like we could have gone one step further and, and saved them all the money. And, and, and to be clear, my, I, I believe at this point, this change needs to go forward to, to go ahead and implement the savings that are in place, but I, I absolutely believe that we need to begin looking at a way to come back through the planning and zoning board and, and remove the fee. I, I just don't see the justification, justification for charging the fee unless somebody can, can point out something other than somebody else does it.
You have a comment on it, Alderman?
Well, I'm, I, I know our previous, at least it's my belief anyhow, maybe I'm wrong, but we've had previous, had planning and zoning directors, and we've charged fees then also. So we're pretty much continuing what we've done in the past, if I'm correct. Terry?
It's been a number of years since we had someone in that position with those abilities, and I would need to go back and take a look at what those fees were. I, I believe you're correct that when they were being done in-house, there was some type of fee, but I honestly don't remember what that entailed or how much those fees were.
And it was my belief too, when Jack was hired, that some of this was in our thought process of when we were hiring him and of his qualifications and stuff. So this is a little bit before your time on, on that part of it. So as, as an Alderman on the previous board, this is, was part of what I envisioned of stepping up to this point.
Well, that's actually, and I would agree. I wasn't here when Jack was hired, and we discussed his qualifications. The, the part that's contradictory about that is, we sat here and discussed a merit increase for Mr. Hamp. And when I, when I spoke with Director Thorne, she stated, we are, we feel that we should compensate him because this is a skill that we did not know he had when we hired him. So that, that's contradictory. Again, I don't think we should be bound by whether or not we charged fees in the past. I, I think we should look at it as, can we provide this service without charging a fee? And I think the answer is yes, because we're already paying Mr. Hamp's salary. Whether we have one permit, no permits requested, or a hundred, Mr. Hamp is going to make the same amount of money.
Alderman Flake, you have a feeling on this?
Well, there's always been fees connected with it, and one of the reasonings for charging the fees was to help pay the person's salary, like Jack, and that was part of it. And that's the way it's been the whole time that I've been on here. There's been fees, and it's... I think it should continue. That way, we can, through the fees, we can help pay for his salary and be a savings to the taxpayer.
Alderman Dreyer?
I gotta agree with Fred on that, you know, most of these are, I mean, most of this is, I assume it's fees for a business, building something or something like that, I mean...
Could be a developer.
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if we can get that money and use that, you know, like Fred's saying, to, to offset Jack's salary, that saves the people of the city money right there.
I served several years on planning and zoning, and I, I can't ever remember doing in-house things on, on any of that stuff. I thought we sent everything out. And, and we went through numerous planning and zoning officers, but I can't recall anyone that had the ability to, to inspect those things. I might be wrong on that, but off the top of my head. My, my, I got two issues with this. One issue is, you know, we're lucky to have Jack, but we don't know how long we're going to have Jack, you know? We don't know what Jack's health is going to be next week. We don't know if he decides to go work somewhere else. You know, we, to leak those fees and make them free, boy, it leaves a bad taste for people if we got to reinstitute them. I mean, they're there, and, and I think developers all expect to pay fees. I, I don't know any of them that come into town that would think otherwise. I would have a problem with using taxpayers' dollars for a developer out of St. Louis that came to Warrenton and wants to develop a piece of property, and, and we're using our tax, tax dollars to pay Jack's salary for him. That's, that's just my personal issue there, so.
I think that's a, that puts a city, that, that thought process of, we shouldn't use our tax dollars to pay fees of a St. Louis developer, it kind of puts the city in an adversarial position against these develop... We, we say we want development, we want to be business friendly, but then we're adversarial, like we shouldn't use our tax dollars to you who's coming in to develop. But again, I, I think it's pretty clear where I stand, so I will, I will be quiet.
Any other thoughts or comments on that? We, we have an amendment to section 405 dash four hundred fees, tabled from last meeting, and we need to move on this. I'll entertain a motion, see where we go.
Mayor, if I may interrupt.
Sure, Mayor.
We have the ordinance on for your consideration later tonight, so I don't know if you guys want to vote on it before we go forward, because it was a little bit disjunctive last time, so...
Explain that again, I didn't hear.
We have an ordinance on for consideration. I was just letting you know later on the agenda too.
Okay, along the same line?
Yeah, I thought it was on last time, it wasn't. Yeah, I thought it was on last time, it wasn't. I just wanted to let you know.
So, you're telling me we don't really need to act upon this and we can pick it up on the ordinance?
Typically, on the zoning issues, you guys vote ahead of time and then we draft the ordinance based on that. But we just went ahead and put the ordinance on.
Okay, understand.
So, it's a little bit-
Everybody fine with that?
And I also wanted to report back to you, Alderman Cornell, so you can report it back to your employer. The statute on voting rights states specifically you're to be given by your employer three hours to go vote.
Three hours.
And that's what I thought it was, so.
Travel time.
Yeah. Does that then put the policy that we just put into place-
No, because it's not specific, but I told Terry it's three hours. And there's some other qualifications on it, so we'll make it the three-hour period. And we can schedule the three hours for the employees.
Yes.
It was non-specific before, that's why she said, "I don't know what it is, but it's three hours."
Thank you.
Jack, you have Item B, Planning and Zoning Commission Request for Guidance for Future Sidewalks?
Yes, uh, with the last site plan approval process for the Raderman Site Plan, with being allowed to pay into the sidewalk fund, the P&amp;Z Commission was just asking guidance from the board for if, if this is the direction that we feel we'll be moving forward with, so they can make sure that when they're going through their process, they're trying to approach things at the same manner that the, that the board is looking at as far as, for approval.
Councilor Gurrell, you want to comment on that or?
Yeah.
Since we've had lengthy discussions on it.
It's pretty lengthy. I don't want to paraphrase what Planning and Zoning, because they pretty much put the question to the board and you guys don't have your full board here tonight to really comment back on it. As far as, they had been directed in the past by past boards, "Build a sidewalk everywhere you can," not to put money into a fund. So, they said, "Why did they do that when they've always said before, 'Build the sidewalk, don't put it into the fund.'" And the fund really was the exception to the rule that pretty much never occurred. So, what we talked about at the meeting was Jack working on, kind of trying to develop some type of master sidewalk plan, if you will, which would take some time to do, to maybe clarify areas where we want to put a sidewalk, where we want to get easements, and the city later on put a future sidewalk, really something in writing that kind of codifies what the cost of a future sidewalk's going to be, because there's really no clear written kind of diet, protocol for it. I do understand what Planning and Zoning's question was, because it's always been, "Build a sidewalk where you can." This was special considerations that I think everybody understood in this particular one. I think even some of the Planning and Zoning members. But, so there's a clear protocol for what you guys are looking for on sidewalk installations, kind of moving forward. So, you know, that's where we kind of talked about, and I'm not going to put, give Jack another job, but I'm going to put this one on Jack as putting together some type of master sidewalk plan with the streets to say, you know, kind of the idea of, you know, we want an entire block to develop. Like this one in particular, you had one, you know, it's, it's a master plan calls for it to be future commercial development. You have one house that's becoming a commercial development, the rest of it was residential. We had the easement dedicated and we had the funds paid into the sidewalk fund, which was more than Miss Raderman's cost even put in her own sidewalk. Just didn't make sense for her at the time. But ideally would be, as this develops, how many properties, as this develops, you know, are we going to try to put that sidewalk in? Because it didn't really work with just the one house. So, they had that question for you. We talked about it a little bit as far as directing that question to you. You know, do you guys want to see something differently? My suggestion, kind of being at both the board meetings and Planning and Zoning, is, you know, maybe we need to look at a bigger picture kind of issue that we can talk to Planning and Zoning about, talk to the board about, and then kind of come together with something for a long-term plan for, hey, this is where we're going to make them be put in, because we're getting there and this is going to be where we're going to kind of put it in when it makes sense. Get easements. That was something we had never done in the past, was get the easement so we could come back and put it in later.
I don't-
Does that sound right, Mayor, kind of?
That, that's right. I think we, and I understand Planning and Zoning's position. We kind of put them on the spot. They're, they're saying, "We've always done it like this, but what, what change are we going to? Have you all changed your philosophy or attitude?" So, I, I think we do need to give that, that some thought.
And they really struggled with the decision. It was a long discussion about that sidewalk.
Sure.
And they, they ultimately said, "Well, we need to put it in because that's how we built all the sidewalks we put in."
I don't know how that, their, their direction has, has changed. I, I say, "Keep on doing what you're doing." Just because in this case, the board didn't necessarily agree with the P&amp;Z's recommendation doesn't mean that what their thought process or is incorrect. It was, it was just a disagreement on that one issue. I would say normally, P&amp;Z's recommendations are followed, so I don't know-
Yeah, well, I think kind of the tiebreaker for this one was, this is what we've been kind of told to do, you know? Because it was a close call. So, I think maybe if they felt that they had more of an option in that situation, that they weren't being directed to do that, you know, which is maybe their own perception. But that's why I kind of go back to Alderman Cornell to kind of developing, looking at, trying to come up with some type of way to look at a capital sidewalk improvement plan that really kind of plans out what we want to do in the next couple of years and, you know, areas where we may not want to put the sidewalks in right away until the whole area is developed. I mean, this is a unique spot. But, you know, it was just kind of an idea of, you know, we kind of broke the tie with, "That's what we think the board's going to want us to do." And then, which is always, the board has said in the past, "Put it in, put it in, put it in."
And I'm new here, but it seems to me that, I would hope that board is not necessarily making their decisions based on what this board wants them to do. I think they're, they're, they're more about it than I do.
That's a very fair point that we can take back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. But we kind of wanted to get approval for you. Obviously, this is not going to be a short-term project, but kind of as a midterm, longer-term project, to start putting together kind of a capital plan for sidewalk improvements to bring back to you guys and then talk to P&amp;Z and really try to come up with something that, you know, has kind of a clear dialogue. And I think it'll help developers too.
I think so too. And, and we might want to get away from the piecemeal thing, you know, one here and one there and maybe do a, like you say, a, a, a block length at a time or something like that.
We can see what other cities are doing. We can focus on easements and making sure we're getting easements where we may not have gotten them in the past. You know, somebody pointed out to me that, you know, there's some sidewalks that we may not have put them on that side of the street when, you know, it was initially done and it didn't really make sense. We would want to put them on other sides of the street. So, you know, just, we, we can communicate with Planning and Zoning that, hey, you know, one of the things was pointed out, "We don't want you to do anything differently because we appreciate what you're doing, because you guys do a great job." You know, make your decision based on what you want to do. You're an independent body. But I think also to kind of put this in the, you know, query as a new kind of idea and concept. It definitely worked with the maintenance. When we did that, you know, Alderman Flake, Alderman Dreyer, Alderman Clark, when, you know, you guys put together that program for rating the sidewalks and the repairs of it, it's definitely worked very well. So, you know, maybe we can kind of put the same concept in play for new sidewalks, see if it works.
Good.
Well, I can remember just one or two instances in the years that I've been on this board where we didn't, we went against what the decision of the P&amp;Z Board recommended. And that was just on account of the ground just didn't lay right for sidewalk. You just couldn't do it, it was impossible. So, there's only been one or two times that that's happened. You know, 99.9% of the time, we follow the recommendations. And this was, this was one of those issues.
Well, and I think that, you know, you guys have been to the meetings, you know, Alderman Flake has come to every meeting. We've got a great P&amp;Z Board. They work really hard and they want to do a good job and they want to be looking at the same issues you guys are looking at. So, I, I think that's part of the question too. Hey, are we doing this, are we looking at this the way that you're looking at it? But I think that response, Alderman Flake is, "We just decided differently," and Alderman Cornell, you know, your response as far as, "We want you guys to do what you do and operate as an independent body, plus these other things." We'll bring that back to the P&amp;Z and see if they have any follow-up questions.
Good.
Well, the P&amp;Z does a great job, I don't doubt about that. They're hardworking, they've put a lot into it.
Jack, you have anything else?
That's it, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gevers?
Morning, Mayor and Board.
Board, yours.
Few items. First item is a stormwater culvert replacement policy.
Have we not had a policy before on?
Not, I'm not aware of, no. This makes it a little easier for me to determine what we got.
Well, I think the issue is replacing culvert pipes. Uh, driveways leave the city street and there's a culvert pipe for the drains, the water drains that go down. And in some instances, people want the culvert pipe to rust out, rot out, whatever, and they want the culvert pipe replaced, which the city can take care of that. The thing is, sometimes they got a concrete street going into their garage, you know, and comes out to the edge of the city easement. And then between there and the city street, there's where the issue is. The drainage pipe is in there and when they dig that all out, put the new stuff in, they want blacktop replaced from the edge of the city street to the end of their concrete driveway. And that's what the issue is, you know? And it's been brought up numerous times. I think the city policy has been, they'll replace the pipe, put gravel in it, but they don't do the blacktop, replace the asphalt. And that's where people are asking questions, "Why can't the city replace the blacktop?" I don't have an answer for that right at the present time, but that's the issue.
Is, is that pretty much what this policy's following then?
Right, it's to whether we replace the driveway itself or the approach or not. And this is saying that we do not.
Do not, okay.
Now, if we go in and tear a water line out and replace the water line, we're going to replace it. If we got to remove the culvert, put storm drain or something in, we'll replace it then and put it back the way it was. But to replace the culvert pipe and then replace the driveway. And we can look at the culvert pipes all the way through too. We've got the equipment to do that.
Yeah. Anyone else have any question on, on the culvert replacement policy? You need any action by the board on this?
Yes, sir.
We do need a motion. I'll entertain it at this time.
So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve the culvert replacement policy for the city of Warrenton. Roll call vote.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero with two absents.
We had a couple requests for some capital projects that we want to get moving on. The first one would be the sidewalk on Cool Street.
Are you all going to do that yourself?
Yes, correct. And this is a carryover from last year, I believe.
Okay.
Do you see any approval for each one of them, of the projects?
You need a, we got a separate approval on each one, or can we lump them together?
We lump them together, Terry.
You guys can lump them together if you're going to, depending on the questions you guys have, if you want to isolate something.
Let's lump the two sidewalks together. One, one on Cool Street and one on Walton. And then on Walton, is that, you're, you're going to go to the other side of the street for that sidewalk?
Going on the opposite side of City Hall, that's correct.
Okay.
My thoughts with that was, people crossing 47 will stay on the cool side and then have to cross twice.
So, it's going to be on the south side?
That's correct.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve, uh, requests for the capital projects of Cool, Cool sidewalk and Walton sidewalk.
Second. You need your mouth?
Motion made by Alderman Clark to approve by Alderman Dreyer to approve the capital project request for the sidewalk on Cool Street and the sidewalk on Walton Street. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero with two absents. Stormwater Troy Road.
Do you have a picture of that? You can see we're losing the side of the road.
So, you're putting the pipe in through there?
Put the pipe in the ditch, that's correct. There's a couple of inlets coming down the hill.
I know where Troy Road is, but I don't know where that-
Oaklawn?
Right, you cross railroad tracks, you're going up the hill.
Oh, right as you cross?
The south banner.
Okay. Right, right there where there's a, when we have a little city fenced-in square-
That's correct, that's a lift station right there.
Pump station, yeah. I know, I know where you're at now.
And we're not actually taking it to the railroad track. We're staying off the easement of the railroad.
Okay. We can lump both those stormwaters together. The other one's on Villa de Shane.
Villa de Shane. And that's a hard picture to see, but when they overleg the street, coming down, I don't know the name of that street, coming down that cul-de-sac, it's too high and it's almost three inches too high for the water to cross. So, we're yet cones sitting where it's wet. We're going to put an area inlet there and then run a pipe and then jump and jar it on the right-hand side and then catch it, put it through another catch basin. What, what's happened is the water's sitting there and it's leaking under the, going under the road and washing, under the road out. So, when you get a big rain, all that water sits in that corner.
These are all budgeted, the capital improvements?
All under budgets too.
Pardon?
They're all under budget.
All under budget? That's good.
I make a motion that we approve the capital improvement of Stormwater on Troy and to the railroad to Oaklawn for $2,850. You want to lump the other one together and-
Put it in there too.
The Villa de Shane? Uh, Stormwater, uh, for $3,520.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the Stormwater piping on Troy Road in the amount of $2,850. Approve the Villa de Shane Stormwater pipe in the amount of $3,520. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero, two absents.
Then you have one more storm drain on Middletown Road. That's washing out underneath.
Washing. I make a motion that we approve the capital improvement on Middletown Road Stormwater Culvert, Culvert for $1,522.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve the Middletown Road Stormwater Culvert in the amount of $1,522. Roll call.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Four to zero with two absents.
Next time, I-
The water pump.
Yeah, these are portable hot trash pumps to pump out for water leaks, pump the hole out. And we had in the, for the budget, $2,700, and Northern Tools, they made under budget.
Is that your recommendation to...
Yes, sir.
Accept that bid from Northern Tools?
Northern Tools.
Any questions? Consider a motion to purchase a pump?
Make a motion to accept a bid of Northern Tools for $2,194.68 for the purchase of water pumps.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to accept a low bid of Northern Tools for a water pump in the amount of $2,194.68. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero, two absences.
Next item I have is the SCADA support agreement. And that's what we use to monitor our wells. And this gentleman takes care of the wells, the SCADA system, comes in and does your maintenance, makes sure all your set points are correct, so we don't have an issue with the height of the wells, water, and... Hank? Let me check your antenna, make sure all the communication's good.
Does this meet our city attorneys?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Our city attorney, has he reviewed this?
I'm told I've looked at it previously, so...
I thought we had voted on it. Didn't we have something?
We voted on the first part, that was for the, to, to the levels, to get them to walk back and forth. But the other, other part of it is the maintenance, to keep the...
Yeah, I remember this, yeah.
Equipment going.
Is this price still accurate? I noticed the date on this bid is January 2000.
Yeah, I talked to him today, and that's correct. That was my fault on the date.
What are we, what are we considering, the support agreement, annual amount of $1,500 or the $4,400?
Forty-four hundred.
We've already approved the $1,500. Am I correct, this is the only vendor that services? It's them or nobody.
Right, and we can't have nobody?
Well, we can, it probably isn't smart to have nobody, is it? I make a motion to approve the bid amount of $4,400 from Electric Control Company for the SCADA Services Maintenance Agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the $4,400 cost for the SCADA Support Agreement. What's the name of that company?
ECs.
Electronic Control Company.
Electronic Control Company.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences.
One other item is for the water meter purchase for the year agreement.
I'm missing that.
I don't think we have that in our...
I just saw it. I saw it, but I don't see it.
John, flip it all the way over, last page.
The last.
Okay. So, what we are approving, exactly $187.90?
That's, that's for each meter, and I apologize, but I don't have the amount for the year budgeted. But we receive them in quarters through the year.
Is this like a re, a rebid thing, where, I mean, we already approved it once, and now that they've...
We approved it last year, and we have to, have to re-approve it and sign a contract with Shulte Supply to hold the price at where that's at.
Why, why don't we do this?
So we just approve and you go get a contract?
Well, if you approve it, then we'll get the contract ready and ordinance to approve next meeting. Because we, we have a standard vendor form contract that I put together for the city that we'll put this on, these price lists, to bring back as an ordinance format, too. If you guys approve the price, and my understanding, it's a single supplier?
That's correct, there's no one else.
No one else, so we'll get that contract with all the provisions, if you guys are okay with continuing with them.
I don't know what, is that what kind of motion you want?
I guess we don't really need a motion, we'll just get the contract.
We need a motion for, for a little of the Shulte Supply Agreement for water meters.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the bid of Shulte Supply Agreement for water meters. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences. What else you got?
That's all I have, unless you have something for me.
I think we're ready to move to Chief Hottashell.
Good evening, Mayor, or? The only thing I have this evening is a new and improved animal adoption policy for your approval. Basically, what we did is took the number of hours weekly for adoptions from twenty to forty-one. It was pretty restrictive back in the day, and actually Brian and Aaron have been doing a great job of making themselves available for adoptions, and we rarely have a full house up there because of that. They do a valuable job of moving animals through the shelter, so I'm just looking for approval on that policy.
The only, the only change is the hours.
Any questions for the chief?
Not specific to this, but when we're, when we're doing policy changes like this in the future, can we get a copy of the old policy? I don't know who that should be directed to, so that we can see that. I would make a motion to approve the changes to the city of Warrenton Animal Adoptions Policy.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the Animal Adoption Policy for the city of Warrenton. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences. Anything else you?
All ahead, thank you, sir.
Michelle, Economic Development.
Good evening. First thing I have for you tonight is my economic development report, and I'd like to give a little update. Warren County EDC met. They have worked out how they're gonna comply with the out of station that the city requires, so they have worked that out, and they're working on that. They discussed that they'd like to have a quarterly contributors' meeting, where they have individuals who've contributed to the group meet and bring someone, so that they can reach out to new individuals, and they can keep those that have contributed up to date on to what's going on. They elected officers, and they were asked by the chamber if they would like to have a representative from the greater Warren County EDC be a non-voting member on the chamber board, and since I am already a non-voting member on the chamber board for the city of Warrenton, they asked if I would represent them as well, so I will be doing that. They also discussed with us a marketing plan, possibly with Montgomery County. Montgomery County is also, has an EDC, and it is with Josh, and they're looking at doing a marketing plan, and so Josh had asked if we would like to work with them on a marketing plan. Leads would still be separate, but we would have a similar marketing plan, since he would be doing a lot of the same work for us than he would be doing for them, if he did a marketing plan for us as well as them. And the board had decided that that would be a good thing if Montgomery goes along with it. But there would be no sharing of leads, so if a lead came into Warren County, it would still be in Warren County if we didn't have a place, and then we gave him approval to go to Montgomery County, he would. It would just be the marketing package with the labor studies and all of that that he does that would be combined, because we'd be pulling in from Montgomery County for our labor pull, anyway. Josh actually had a meeting with real estate contributors and discussed with the contributors and non-contributors how leads would be handled, and how they will handle different leads within it, and, you know, one of the concerns was if there's a, a non-contributor who has a piece of property, what would happen if they would take the lead outside? And that was mentioned, that, you know, they had discussed if, if someone comes in and they're a non-contributor, and they have property, and they would then locate somebody in another community, then in the future, we would not utilize that real estate agent for leads anymore, or for properties anymore. So that was addressed. Alderman Fred Flake and I attended MoDOT Blue Ribbon Committee Meeting. There was a very good turnout, we had a large representation from Warren County there, so that was very good. MoDOT gave us some idea, you should have a packet in there that they handed out, it's got transportation facts, it's got their financing, and just some different information that they gave us, which was really good information. They stated that they've not raised the gas tax in twenty years, and in that time, the federal government has put laws on car manufacturers that you have to have the cars go more miles per gallon, and therefore, they're getting less and less funding. If they would do a one-cent gas tax, they would generate approximately thirty million a year. They could do a one-cent sales tax, they would generate about seven-hundred million a year. The toll bridge, of course, toll road was a very, very big thing. There was a lot of individuals who stood up and stated that it was not be good for the region. Few people said, you know, didn't really matter if they did it. Some said, it's fine, others said, as long as it's told throughout the state, and more than just I-70 is told. But I think the majority of the individuals said, we'd rather see something besides a toll, because we need to put all communities at the same advantage or disadvantage, and not put, some, it was brought up, I had mentioned, you know, what happens if you do the toll road, six months or a year down the road, two years down the road, you decide that that's not enough, and now you've gotta do a one-cent tax. You've double taxed the communities where the toll road is at. So I think MoDOT has a lot that they're gonna be thinking about, what's gonna happen, I'm not sure, but we did go and voice our concerns, so that was a really good thing for us. Any questions?
So toll roads aren't dead?
They are not dead, and from my understanding, they will not be dead for possibly some time. There's a gentleman in, who has brought this up, and he is really pushing for toll roads, so hopefully, we can get something else besides toll roads.
Is he an area that would be affected by toll roads?
Um, he is representative, and he has several counties, and only one of his counties would be affected by toll roads, the rest of them would not be.
It is a state representative?
I'm thinking Keyhole? I'd have to...
Kirk Keyhole?
I'd have to look at that. And then the next thing I have for you is bid tabs. I would like to make a recommendation for Highway Forty-Seven Streetlight Project, that we go with Reinhold Electric, who is the low bidder, and we have received concurrence from MoDOT to go with them.
Am I correct, we have, doesn't the state require us to go with the low bidder?
Yes, they do, as long as they are competent bidder, and they've been pre-approved by MoDOT, which they have been, so...
I'd make a motion to accept the bid of Reinhold Electric Company in the amount of $124,581 for the Highway Forty-Seven Lighting Project.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the Highway Forty- Seven Lighting Project bid set for Reinhold, the electric company, in the amount of $124,581. Roll call, please.
Alderman Burn?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero, two absences. Anything else, Michelle?
That is all I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
Concerning that Highway Forty-Seven Lighting, any start date or any time?
Not at this point, because once we received approval from you, we will go back. We have to have a pre-construction meeting, so I will contact our engineer to see if he considers a pre-construction meeting, probably early next week. And then, once we get that and get approval from MoDOT to get going, then we can get moving forward.
Ginny Hoffman, Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Good evening, Mayor, I'm on board, I have one item for you tonight. You have received a list of soccer referees. With your approval, I would like to hire these individuals.
I make a motion to approve, uh, part-time referees.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the hard list of seasonal employees for soccer season? Is that what these are?
Yes. You said a lot better.
Pardon me?
You said a lot better than I did. Ditto.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero, two absences. What else, Ginny?
That's all I have, but it looks like Alderman Cornell has a point to make.
Of course I do. Another pointed question, how is the attendance at the farmer's market so far?
You know, it's doing great. In years past, we were able to count on about six vendors, we're seeing ten. The pavilion is being filled with vendors, so that's a great thing. It's hard to truly assess how many people are attending, but, you know, I'm looking up, and I'm seeing lines, and I'm seeing customers coming and going throughout different times of the market in the past. What we would see is, you know, they'd show up at eight, then after a while, it would die down. But we're seeing a more consistent kind of trend of customers coming in at different types of hours of the market. And I'm even turning some customers away when it's time to close, so it's not dying down, it's continuing to grow, and I think it's great for the farmer's market.
You just came to the, the direction I'm going. I have been approached by a couple of vendors, as well as several customers, who believe that it would be best for all to extend the hours beyond ten-thirty to, say, noon, eight to noon, because that two-and-a-half hour window, especially with soccer season getting ready to start this weekend, a lot of people are gonna be tied up in the mornings. I would, I would certainly like to see that extended, if the, if the vendors are there, still have product and wanna sell it, and the customers are still coming wanting to buy them, I'd, I'd love to see that extended.
You know, I think it's a great point. I'm always happy to serve the public as, as much as possible, and if extending those hours is a way that we can provide better service for the patrons, I think that's a great idea. One of the things that comes to mind is the labor costs. So if we decide to extend, I'd like to kinda keep an eye on, on how far we go into that extension. Looking at the arrival of the vendors, they like to arrive at about six-thirty, so we get set up, we see them in, then we're kinda idle there until about eight. Eight o'clock till ten-thirty, yes, we're seeing various streams of customers. I would have to say that I have been onsite, and I have waited until the vendor has left, the last vendor, and what I see is, you know, we get about, I'd say I've turned away ten, ten people. The policy that I have currently in place is, it's unofficial, but it's kind of like what I do in order to provide good service and keep things fair. What I do is I tell the vendors, you know, we ring the bell at eight o'clock, eight o'clock starts selling. We ring the bell at ten-thirty. At ten-thirty, complete your sales to the patrons that are currently in your line, but at that point, I start to talk to the customers and say, hey, you know, we've closed for this time, but next week, if you can get here a little bit earlier. I would say that definitely another half hour would be great, that would put us to eleven. From eleven to noon, you know, it's hard for me to really know if that is a feasible extension, because I don't have anything to gauge that upon. I haven't seen that type of activity in the past. I can say that there are certain vendors that have customers from other locations, and then, you know, they follow them there. So there is that opportunity for those vendors to say, you know, I'm here from this hour to this hour, so maybe you can accommodate your schedule. But I think it's a great idea to extend. I think that, I would just like to make sure that as we extend, we put some good thought into the length of the extension.
And, and one of those, I guess, would be inquiry, I know that the vendors don't wanna be there without customers, so I guess an inquiry, like I said, I've had two that expressed a desire to stay till noon. It'd be interesting to see if, if the others have an interest of, of staying till noon also, so...
Sure. Would you suggest that I go back and talk to the vendors, maybe bring some feedback back to the board, and then move from there?
I would, I would love to see that.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
When is your season over?
We go through about, right about mid-October, just so that we can get that kind of pumpkin type of prop, and then that's a good time for crafts and some pre-Christmas types of crafts. So I'd say about mid-October.
Any other questions for Ginny?
Wait, I'm sorry. If you go back and, and bring that back, I know you're not due back in two weeks for the meeting. Can we, can we have you come back and report that in two weeks so that we...
I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you.
Sure.
No other questions, we're gonna move on. I'm, I'm on item 14. We have some bills to convert to ordinance, it's bill number 37-12.
Call for a first reading of bill number 37-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dreyer, seconded by Alderman Clark for the first reading of bill number 37-12.
The county ordinance is authorized under section 405.390 of the municipal code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, approving a site plan for Mary Brandon CPA LLC located at 812 at Memorial Parkway.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 37-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dreyer for second and final reading of bill number 37-12.
The county ordinance is authorized under section 405.390 of the municipal code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, approving a site plan for Mary Brandon CPA LLC located at 812 at Memorial Parkway.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero, two absences. Bill number 38-12.
Call for the first reading of bill number 38-12.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dreyer for the first reading of bill number 38-12.
In ordinance amending section 405.400 fees of the municipal code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 38-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dreyer for second and final and passage reading of bill number 38-12.
In ordinance amending section 405.400 fees of the municipal code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Motion passed three to one with two absences. Number 15, Resolution Number 298, Resolution of the Warrenton Board of Aldermen calling for a public hearing to annex an unincorporated area into the City of Warrenton. Who wants to address that? No one?
My understanding is there's a application by some members of the property where the proposed interchange is proposed to go, wanting to annex into the city limits. It's their application and their petition to do it.
Okay, so, so they're voluntarily...
Voluntary.
Anexing it.
Request voluntary annexation.
And how many acres is that?
You know, I don't know, do you guys know?
Forty point 26 and 0.18 acres. It's two parcels.
The north, north side of, the north side of 70?
South.
What kind of a motion is needed?
Just a, it doesn't, the bill doesn't need to be read, just a vote. Somebody move to pass it and a vote and then we'll go ahead and proceed with the publication you guys approved of.
I'll move to pass Resolution Number 298.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Clark to, for passage of Resolution Number 298, Resolution of the Warrenton Board of Aldermen calling for a public hearing to annex an unincorporated area into the City of Warrenton. Roll call vote?
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero, two absences. Anything else brought before the board? I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Clark to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote like us, we're adjourned.